Five twenty-nine, right?
Yep.
What's up, buddy?
All right, I'm all right.
Larry's here.
He's just right there.
Okay.
But I also thought Brad was here.
Brad is he? No, he's back there.
Oh my, did I? I was like, I thought he saw him.
Can you shout out, Camilla?
Yeah.
The November fourth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the City Council is called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Redpath, can you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Cox?
Here.
Alderman Gregory?
Here.
Alderman Williams? Alderman Rockford?
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase? Alderwoman Attriano?
Here.
Alderman Carlson?
Here.
Ald- Alderwoman Conley? Alderman Donlin?
Here.
Alderman Hanauer?
Here.
Mayor Buscher?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk Redpath, I appreciate it. The civility pledge, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. Tonight, there are no proclamations or presentations.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to permit Alderwoman Conley and Alderman Hanauer to participate via electronic means.
I have a motion and a second to allow Alderwoman Conley and Alderman Hanauer to join us via phone. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, Alderman Donlin.
You're welcome, Mayor.
The Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five regular City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place a new item on the first reading. Can I get a motion to suspend the rules first?
So moved.
And a second, now I'm going to read it into the record. The Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules. We're going to put on first reading ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash four eight three, which is an ordinance authorizing a sub-recipient agreement with Ring of Champions and payment in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for acquisition located at twenty-four-hundred East Cook Street using CBDG Community Development Block Grant Funds pursuant to Agreement twenty-five dash SR dash zero 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 three for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. So we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and put this on first reading. All those in favor to put it on first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And then, does anyone have any discussion that they want to give me on the first reading of that? And then you'll have it on your agenda next week for the committee meeting. Thank you all very much. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So moved, Mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Alderman Gregory?
I just have a, um...
Sorry, I just not saw that, my apologies.
No problem. I just have a preliminary procedure question to Corporation Counsel. Corporation Counsel, if I have a question on two thousand twenty-five four fifty-seven, is that appropriate now, or?
So, after we incorporate the pre-council reading, if you're going to discuss it, it'd be better when it's put on final passage, because that would be the time to, to pull it from consent, if you want to.
All right, thank you, sir.
Any other discussion, Alderman Gregory?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Alderman Hanauer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Conley, how do you vote?
The Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Alderman Gregory?
Uh, yes, I just thought, well, I'm sorry, too many times. So I just, I just need some clarity, so, for my own self. So, in the contract, of course, the raises, I'm fine with, but I do have questions on the, first, the residency part, portion of it, it's in the contract, and if somebody could talk to me, why that's important, or why, why is that a sticking point?
Sure, so, the residency language is the standard language that the city has been using since the City Council passed a moratorium on the residency requirement. So, we have, what it allowed is, is it suspends the residency requirement if the city, but it allows the city, creates it a matter of collective bargaining, so the city can negotiate it. If the city wants to reimpose a residency requirement, if it lifts the moratorium, the city would go back to the bargaining table and negotiate a residency requirement at that time.
Okay. Um, I don't know, that's, that's tough for me, the residency portion, because I feel like we, we cut ourselves on, in our minority hiring, which we've been doing fine, what, by not having our residency, and, and people in the city of Springfield, and Springfield addresses should definitely have first crack at these fine jobs, and be trained up to be the very good firefighters that the city pushes, and the first-class fire department that we have, so that, you know, that's tough for me, to put it in, to put it in the contract. I understand the overall city, city moratorium, how long are we going to do that for?
They get points for being a resident when they test. They get additional points.
They do have a local preference, but it's not a requirement in the contract.
Is this moratorium in all of our contracts?
The ones that have been negotiated since the moratorium was put in place.
How many has that been since then? Probably about three, maybe?
Well, I would need to get back to you on that.
Okay. Mayor, I know you, you asked for this moratorium, so how long have we been, have we been a year in this moratorium, a little bit longer?
Uh, I would say probably, I would have to go back and look when we passed it, but I, my guess is yes, sir.
Do you intend us going much further? Do we, do we see the need for that?
So at this time, it is difficult to get a lot of our professional jobs still, CPAs, engineers, the jobs that we still had the problem with, that's why we put it in place. I will tell you, and if Doug Brown is here, he will laugh as I say this, I push back very hard if there is a candidate that is not in the city, and there's a lot of applications, I actually won't sign the hiring recommendation and send it back. So, I do look at them, and I make sure that it is a position that we are to the point where we have to hire from without the city in order to get the position filled, if that's the case.
Okay. All right. And then, on the, I know we had talked briefly about the, the changes to the contract and what it did to our budget, I know you had gave, gave me a number, and I wasn't quite sure on that number that you gave me.
The numbers are, who are you talking about?
Yes, was it eleven point nine? When, when I asked?
Huh? I, I've spoken to you.
When I asked an executive session about our budget, you gave me a number. Well, Ms. Ramona, what would be our number?
I did not talk to you about numbers in there.
Sure, no, no problem. So, what does this, what does this do to our budget, this, this contract? Where would it leave us at?
There should be a fiscal form that's attached. Um, did you, did you see that? I just opened up the contract.
Not, but I could have missed it, but I, I...
It's towards the end, I think it's on page seven.
I can't pull it up right now for on my computer for some reason.
Um, I can tell you. What you say? So, the total, the total base of regular salaries over the life of the contract would be eleven point four eight two million.
Right.
And with the FICA, pardon, or not FICA, the Medicare, public safety injury pay, sick leave payout contribution, workers' comp contributions, the employer contributions, that raises it to twelve point four four seven million.
Mm-hmm. And that leaves us with our fund balance, our corporate fund at, I know you give us that ending number, what?
Have that memorized right now.
That's, is that over the life of the contract?
I am, with the fund balance, we're actually at a higher fund balance right now.
No, I mean, the quote, the number you gave, is that for just the fiscal year or the life of the contract?
Oh, that was for the life of the contract over the four years.
I think you need to explain that to the Alderman. The number she gave you for the life of the contract.
So, for fiscal year twenty-six, the regular, the regular salary impact is just over one million dollars at one million nineteen thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars. And with the employer fringes, it would put it at one million ninety-seven thousand dollars.
So, our ending, would that put us at, what, eleven percent, twelve percent? I guess what I'm asking is, is where, where are we at on that? Are we, are we safe? Because, you know...
Yes, we're still safe.
Okay. All right. Even with, if we go from forty-eight to fifty-two with that, is that, is that calculated in those numbers as well?
Forty-eight to fifty-two.
If we go to minimum manning from forty-eight to fifty-two? Because that, that gives us nine more firefighters.
The, no, the, can I let Corporate, Corporation Counsel answer that? That's not the budget.
So, so, yeah, yes, we, our, our financial projections have included manning at fifty-two. We've been manning at fifty-two since two thousand twenty-four, when Firehouse thirteen opened.
All right, good people, I appreciate that information. I just thought it was important to know and to ask, so I can make an informed decision, that's all. I, I, I'm, I'm still uncomfortable with the residency portion of it, I, I, I just really, really think that the jobs that we're struggling to find people for is, is where the moratorium should be, not on firefighters and police and areas that I, I believe that we have, you know, a, a, a good pool to train up. I don't, I don't feel like any, we're ever going to go out and pick the perfect firefighter or the perfect police officer, that many of them are trained up by, by the staff. So, thank you. So, so, on this particular contract, I'm nervous, I'm just uncomfortable. So, so with this, I'm going to be voting present on it, because I really just need to compare some numbers. I'm definitely for our firefighters making the money with arbitration, so that's not something that we can do, but I believe our residency, and I think we got to be careful with, with setting the minimum, minimum manning at fifty-two in the contract. Is this my, my take on it? Thank you.
So, Alderman, I just want to get, be clear, it's still on the consent agenda, do you, are you wanting to just, do you need to pull this out?
No, it doesn't need to, if, if he's going to go with a present vote, he just notes that to the clerk, that he's present on that particular ordinance, and it can stay on consent.
I just want to make sure that you're okay there, Alderman.
All right, thank you, I appreciate you.
You're welcome, Alderman. Any other discussion?
No. Any discussion from Alderman Conley, and Alderman Hanauer?
No. No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, with that, then, are you okay back there for vote? Okay, so then, voting will now be open. All those in favor of the consent agenda will vote yes, all those opposed will vote no.
Alderwoman Conley, how do you vote? Alderman Conley, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Alderman Hanauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. And then, Alderman Gregory?
Yes. Clerk, please mark me as a present on this vote.
We got that.
Thank you, sir.
So, on the, on the consent agenda itself, are you present on the whole thing, or just that one ordinance, Alderman?
It's on two thousand twenty-five four fifty-seven.
Okay. So, the motion for the omnibus vote, with the exception of one ordinance, passes with eight voting yes, none voting no, and then that one ordinance is seven voting yes, one voting present. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Gregory.
Thank you.
Uh, agenda items two thousand twenty-five dash two four seven, two thousand twenty-five dash two eight one, and two thousand twenty-five dash four two two remain tabled or in committee. I don't have any action for those, is everyone okay with that? The next item on the agenda is item number two thousand twenty-five dash four thirty-four, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between the city of Springfield and Tina M. Pierce for the property located at seventy-eight Fairview Lane for the Office of Public Works. The Chair will entertain a motion to recess this regular meeting and hold a public hearing for consideration of the annexation agreement. A motion and a second for the public hearing, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion for the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The public hearing is now open, does anyone in the council chambers wish to discuss this annexation agreement? Is anyone here for this at seventy-eight Fairview Lane? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the public hearing, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Chair will entertain a motion to close the, or I'm sorry, just did that. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda item two thousand twenty-five dash four thirty-four on final passage.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the ordinance itself? Seeing none, voting will now be open, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no.
Alderwoman Conley, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
Alderman Hanauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
So, the motion passes with eight voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item two thousand twenty-five dash four thirty-five, an ordinance supplementing an agreement with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated to perform preliminary engineering and land acquisition for the Springfield Rail Improvements project and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of four million dollars for the Office of Public Works. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda item number two thousand twenty-five dash four thirty-five on final passage.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Alderman Gregory?
Yes, ma'am. Corporation Counsel, did you find out any information on our ability to strike the greenway for this portion?
Right, so, the, the greenway portion of this funding is, well, this funding doesn't apply to the greenway at all, but we do have a ten million dollar grant that we just received, two point seven million, and that is for the greenway. So, if we, if we hold up doing anything on the greenway, while we work out, while we go through the five hundred thousand dollar Nineteenth Street feasibility study, and then determine what we're going to do with Nineteenth Street, it's very likely that we're going to lose that two point seven million dollars that will go towards the greenway.
Listen, I would have rather lose two point seven million dollars to build a greenway than let the people of the east side watch something that was told to them and promised to them be built, and they never see it. They're, they're, they're not going to see anything on that railroad track for a mighty, mighty long time. I'll be sixty, sixty, before we see anything as far as, as fast as we're moving over there. And I just think that, that that's a bad picture to paint. We already got passed over for so many things, but for us to paint, and, and like I say, I'm going back doing my studies, but for us to paint as collective, as a city, many of us wasn't here to say, oh, we're going to do these rails and the Nineteenth Street tracks is going to be beautiful, like the Third Street tracks, and now we got everything pushing, we got all the money for everything else but the Nineteenth Street tracks. So, we continue on the narrative that we're going to promise the east side something, we're going to quiet them down, and then we're going to go on about our business. And I can't, I, I can't be a part of that, I got to push back on that, at least say, hey, let's pause on the greenway, finish the tracks, which is going to take years. Nate, you at the podium, how long before we're going to see them train tracks on Eleventh Street?
Alderman, can I interrupt for a second, for a second, please? I just want to let you know that I was not the Alderman, or the mayor, or an Alderman, when all of that took place, and I'm not even sure you were an Alderman when it started, because it started with Senator Turner and people before you.
Yes, ma'am.
But, as the mayor, I have committed, and I talked to Senator Turner about the subject often, very often, and I have committed to her that we are working on Nineteenth Street, and that is what Nate is a part of as well, but there is a commitment from this administration to work on that as well. I need you to hear that, because you and I haven't had that conversation, so.
Yes, ma'am, and I thank you for that.
I'm not part of the committee when you brought it up, but I talk to the Senator often, because she feels responsible, because she was in these chairs making that promise at that time.
Yes, ma'am, and I thank you for that. And, and, and I hear people tell me things about what we're going to do on the east side, I've read it, I've studied it, but it hasn't happened, so I can't take words on, on, I'll vote for this thing, and twenty years later, I'll be coming up here complaining about it still, like, I can't, I, I can't go for that, so, we're not at the point with the grant yet, correct?
I'm going to let, do you mind if Nate speaks now, I interrupted, sorry?
So, this ordinance is for three point five seven eight million dollars for Series B bond money. It's not associated with the ten million dollars for the local, the, the LPF grant money. However, with that being said, we do have an ordinance prepared, and will be coming on for First Reading November the eighteenth, for the five hundred thousand dollars to do the Nineteenth Street feasibility study, to move forward with that. It's similar to what we did with Third Street, where we started with the feasibility study, and we were able to leverage money so that we can start construction. Our goal is to start with the Nineteenth Street, do the feasibility study. It's a potential, obviously, with the Kincaid Power Plant closing down, the corridor could potentially be, be vacated, and we could potentially make it a greenway.
Absolutely.
We're not totally sure, but we are planning on still doing improvements to Nineteenth Street, we want to do the proper improvements. It may not necessarily be a railroad corridor, but we can improve it and do safety improvements to the intersections, whether it be a, a multi-use trail, but we, we need to study that and get in good shape so that we can have shovel-ready projects. The first thing to do is that feasibility study, which we're, the mayor, and we're committed to doing, and you'll see that on First Reading November the eighteenth.
Thank you, I appreciate you for that, but, you know, and, and I'm glad to hear that, and I'm still going to wait to see those things. That's what point I'm at in this career that I'm serving, right? Is, 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 show me, I, I'm not, I'm out of the tail business, right? Because I've seen too many things, I need to see it with my own two peepers, and, and, and make sure that we're going to do it, because we'll say it, if, if we wouldn't make enough fuss about this, can we honestly say that we'd be at this point of doing a feasibility study? Because the Senator had to say, no, we are going to fix the Nineteenth, thank God, she's our senator, because if we sitting down here still, we, we'd still be begging and, you know, pleading about the Nineteenth Street tracks. So, for, for me, it just does my community a disservice for us to sit and watch this beautiful thing happening in our community. It's going to be quite some time, in my opinion, before we see the Third Street tracks and that train on Eleventh Street go all the way by, by, by the Horseshoe Stadium and all that good stuff that's going on over there, and then take up all those tracks on the Third Street, and then do what we need to do. We're talking, we're talking some time, that ain't going to come quick. We still waiting on Martin Luther King to be redone, right? That, that's been a couple of years, so, all of those things are going to take some time to do that, and, you know, all I'm, all I'm asking, and all I'm going to keep pushing for is to see some real action. is to see some real action on that Nineteenth Street corridor. I'd be happy to see the, 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 the ordinance come through, and I'd be happy to see some meetings coming and some real tangible plans on what we're gonna do with the Nineteenth Street track, because guess what, even when y'all plan it, what we gotta do? We gotta go get big time money from the feds and the state, how long that's gonna take, in this political climate? So here we are again, east side last, it just is what it is. So it's not your fault, I ain't blaming the mayor or anything, it's, it's this, it's this thinking in our city that the east side always gotta be last, no, we, a place like that should be first, in my opinion, but that's just me. I just wanted to explain where I'm at on this, I wanna see her railroad done, Rockford's got big things going on in his ward, I love it, I'm all for it, but I can't let, I can't let the east side get left out, my portion of Nineteenth Street, I drive all those tracks, it irritates me every time I drive over them.
And Alderman, Nineteenth Street, the overpass, North Grand, that's one of the, one of the tracks you're talking about, that will be completed the end of twenty twenty-seven, which will improve access, obviously, to the east side. Also, there are three crossings, Griffiths, Moffett, and Converse on the Nineteenth Street corridor that should be fixed next construction season, improving those crossings as well.
Good, 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 we just need to school south a little bit, good work.
And, and that's part of the feasibility study, where we're looking from Clear Lake Avenue all the way down to the Kincaid Power Plant, which you'll see for First Street November eighteenth.
All right, I appreciate you, sir, thank you.
Any other questions, Alderman Gregory?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion from the alders? Want to see if those two, any of the people?
Any questions from Alderwoman Conley or Alderman Hanauer?
Nope.
Okay, so we okay? So voting will now be open, all those in favor of the ordinance, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no.
Alderwoman Conley, how do you vote? Alderwoman Conley, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Alderman Hanauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
So the motion passes with seven voting yes and one voting present. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda item number twenty twenty-five dash four three seven on final passage to appoint James W. Peters as the purchasing agent for the city of Springfield.
A move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Peters, do you want to take the podium at all and say anything one last time?
Let's dance. I have a prepared statement, if that's okay?
Sure, that's great, didn't even expect that.
It's an honor to be here and to be considered for the appointment of purchasing agent for the city of Springfield. I would like to extend my sincere thanks to Mayor Buscher and Director Metzger for this tremendous opportunity. I was born and raised in Springfield, and I've spent the majority of my life here, with the exception of approximately four years, during which I relocated for professional advancement. During that time, I lived in Peoria and Tustin, California. My family and I are proud to call Springfield home, their support has been instrumental throughout my career, and I'm deeply committed to serving the community we share. I bring to the city nearly three decades of experience in bank management and finance, with a strong background in underwriting, regulatory compliance, and training and development of employees. As purchasing agent, I'm committed to ensuring that all procurement transactions are conducted in the best interest of the city and its citizens, with strict adherence to city code and established procedures. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Any discussion from the alders? All right, thank you very much, seeing none? Thank you, Alderman Rockford. Seeing none. Voting will now be open, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no.
Alderwoman Conley, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Alderman Hanauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
So the motion passes with eight voting yes and none voting no, congratulations, Mr. Peters. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council tonight from any of the members, and we should probably ask the two on the phone?
Alderwoman Conley or Alderman Hanauer, do you have any old business?
Or new?
Alderman Rockford, you do, it looks like.
Yes, corporation counsel, I've been asked by a few people, is there been any movement on the Wyndham? Have we heard anything on the Wyndham, what, any?
In, in, in what sense? We are, in my office is pursuing violations, we had them in administrative court a couple days ago on their first appearance, we're, we're proceeding with fines. I, I can't, there are about twenty-nine pages of code violations that we're, that we're finding them for, they have an attorney out of Chicago that has entered their appearance in that case, and, but we are seeking fines and, and seeking them to repair the, the violations. I know that, that they put boards up, but our code requires those boards to be painted, so I've heard about, about that, and we are, we're trying to address that through them.
Yeah, so, but, but we won't hear anything from, from them legally, they're, they're in court with, with insurance companies and they got their own business going on, right? I mean?
Yeah, there are large insurance dollars in federal crimes that have been alleged, so administrative court, I think, takes a backburner for the ownership group.
Thank you.
Any other old business from the alders?
I have a follow-up on that.
Alderwoman Otriano?
Thank you, mayor. So while they are dealing with their legal troubles, does that mean that no one can buy or show interest in the property, is the property sort of like frozen?
The city's not holding up, not holding up any sale or frozen, as far as what, what the feds or insurance companies are doing, I don't have access to that, but the city's not hindering any sale at this point.
Okay, so could they have liens then?
Who, who's?
The, the feds or the insurance company?
So there's, there's likely, and I could go check, but there's likely been lis pendens that have been filed with li- liens or potential liens on the property, saying this property's subject to lawsuits. But that's just, but I don't have any firsthand knowledge of what's going on on that front.
Okay, but that would maybe create some problems if there were a potential, if there was interest in it.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion?
Alderwoman Conley, do you have any discussion on this?
No, thank you.
Alderman Hanauer? Row.
I'm good.
So now we're on to new business, and before I ask the alders about new business, I want to promote on Saturday at Lake, the Lake Springfield Beach House, which is in Ward One. There will be a pumpkin smash event from eleven to two, where you can bring your pumpkins out, or if you don't have pumpkins to smash and have children that want some activities, we will have them for them. There is a shred event going on at the same time the city's promoting, touch a truck for children, I guess if you're an adult, you can touch a truck too if you want, food trucks will be there, and then most importantly, from eleven to three, the Central Illinois Food Bank is gonna be there for, for a food drive for our community. So if anyone would like to come out to Center Park, to the Lake Springfield Beach House area on Saturday from eleven to three is the food drive, and we really encourage you to come out and bring some food, so we will be there for all of you. Alderman Carlson?
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to share some good news, I do that once in a while, but I, you know, sometimes we, we, we don't often praise our city employees, you know, we're after them a lot, but I do want to thank Director Fuchs, who's here in Buckley, my zone coordinator, everybody who drives down Wall Bash, thousands and thousands of cars a day, there's a sound barrier wall that separates Sherwood from Wall Bash, little history, that was put in about fifteen years ago, and so when the, the state or the city bought some land right there, the residents there wanted that wall, but as we've seen the last couple of years, it's gotten, it's gotten dirty, deteriorated, but persistence from the residents and their aldermen. Director Fuchs, thank you for getting that thing painted this week and actually a second coat today, the residents over there are thrilled, and it just helps a little bit of the beautification of Springfield, just the little things like that that are important, so, thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gregory?
No, I, I-
I just want Director Posey, because he stood up. Is that true?
No.
He's supposed to show off his tie.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Alderman Gregory.
I was gonna say, on, on, on my first, no, no, I, I do agree with Alderman Carlson, things like that, as we've had the Cook Street underpass addressed, as far as what we could do as the city, and I appreciate the staff for, for hearing us and hearing how important that was, especially for people who, who are walking and trying to get, you know, under that or over that Cook Street Bridge, so I appreciate it, I appreciate the pictures and I, I appreciate the, the quick turnaround work. And as far as our workers, I, I'll say is, anything I say up here is only on, on our directors, they the ones who are directing and have nothing to do with our workers, they getting directions from our directors and our mayor and, and us, as far as what we doing, so anything that they're doing wrong, it falls on all of us up here making the decisions, not, never them. And, and, and my, my final, my final, final question, last week, we had, we had a jury decision, conviction of Sean Grayson in the murder of our dear sister, Sonia Massey, and I appreciate the statement that the city put out, thinking about her, and, 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 you know, as I said, I, I, I'm just in a different mood, and I, and I really want to make sure that we, we understand that, you know, in that statement, we say we're reviewing our policies and all of those things, and when I hear those things, i- 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 it worries me a little bit, because I know at other times, we have these conversations and we really take pride in what we do, so, so, you know, whatever we need to review, I know our Police Review Commission needs tightened up, it needs to meet, it needs to function. We've, we've had people from that commission and stakeholders that we meet with for twenty-two minutes, twenty-two meetings, and all of those things, that said that, that process, for whatever reason, not blaming you, my friend, is not working, and I wanna, you know, I, I, I know I've reached out to chief and everybody, and I said, hey, I want to meet, and those meetings haven't happened about the topics that, that should be talked about. So going forward, and I said this is new business, you know, I think we have to hold true to our statements, I think we gotta get, make sure that our, our, that commission is functioning and being able to review what they want to review. I'm not gonna say why I feel those ways, but there's reasons why I feel that way. The people are telling us that, that that needs to happen, so, you know, again, I'm gonna say, hey, let's have a meeting, let's talk about the functionality of this commission that's important, especially in this timeframe that we have going out. I do have some thoughts on it, I won't say it here on how we need to make that go, we, we, we probably need to just tear it on down and rebuild it, so it functions, and it, and it does what it needs to do for both the community and our police. If, if we're up here and the community's not seeing it there, then we know we got work to do, if we're even, then we know we're right on track, because we've gotten the opinions of those who we serve, and that's all I'm gonna say on that topic, but I, I, but I am so serious about it, so I, I, I look forward to these meetings happening, and if not, fine, so be it, we'll, we'll, we'll bring our ordinance and we'll get after it, so thank you.
Thank you. Alder, Alderman Posey, did you, I'm sorry, Director Posey, I know Alderman Donlin signed up to speak, did you want to say something before Alderman Donlin speaks, or?
I don't know, I'm on the edge of my seat.
All right, well, Director Posey, he's trying to up his tie game to compete with you, Alderman Donlin.
I am, and we're also, you know, very supportive of moving Pillsbury forward with the Pillsbury tie here, but also, so Alderman, Thursday, November the sixth, here in the city council chambers, we will be having a Police Community Review Commission meeting, which is open for all people in the public to attend, and that will be here at five thirty. In the chambers, the doors will be open for people to come, but also, I, I love to, I don't have a huge staff, but I love to brag on the fact that we are expanding our outreach team, and I, I would be mistaken to not recognize our newest member of our outreach team, who is here in the crowd, Ms. Mary Doris, if she would stand up.
I'm gonna stand up, Mary Doris.
Welcome. Mrs. Mary Doris has come to us from task formerly as a deflection specialist, so with her on the team, we've now tripled the size of our outreach team, as you guys were wonderful enough to budget for us to do, we're working on a lot of different things in collaboration with our different agencies and our community partners to try and be, bring a more person-centered approach to how we are working with our unhoused community, our community in mental health, our community in substance use and opioid use disorder, but I very much like to recognize my, my staff members when they are new and they're here and they've hit the ground running and doing a great job, so I just wanted to recognize Mrs. Mary Doris.
Thank you, Director, and thank you, Mary Doris, for joining us. Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, mayor, thank you for this opportunity, just to say a few words, I just wanted to publicly thank you, your team, everybody in this council.
For not giving up.
For not giving up, and we're still not there, but we've made some progress at the Old Town Apartments, the biggest eyesore that's visibly there is gone, the demolition had began this week, I've also been contacted by some serious, I'll just call them developers that are interested in redeveloping the property, so can't make any promises here today, but at least there's some positive talk, but, mayor, when you first came in, you, you got a group of all the departments together, outside agencies, and, and tried to look at how we could collectively make this area what it once was, and I know we're not there, but we're making baby steps, a part of that process, unfortunately, was the court process that takes a while, and, Mr. Mordock, thank your team, though, on behalf of the entire Ward Nine, for everything they've done, again, we're not all the way there, but we're, we're moving forward, so thank you very much.
Absolutely. Do you want to see if they have any business, new business?
Alderwoman Conley, do you have anything for the new business? Alderman Hanauer?
Nope.
Okay, so we are on to citizens who have addressed in advance to speak to the council, go ahead, Clerk Redpath.
James Johnson.
Did we lose somebody? Both of them?
Where are your gloves? You ready, Chuck?
Yes, go.
I want to start off with, you know the Bible story of Noah? And Noah tried to prepare everybody for the big flood, and nobody listened to Noah until the big flood showed up. So when these citizens come up here and start talking about different stuff, consider that Noah speaking, because what's happening in our community and in our country right now is, has been mentioned from right here that dark days are coming, and we are under attack, and for some reason, the media don't want to tell the truth, Republican Party don't want to tell the truth, so I'm gonna come up here and spend a few minutes and tell the truth about some stuff, because, what, we're on record day of shutdown, and we're probably gonna surpass that record by a large number, and I said it before, and I say it again, we better get ready. Now, what I'm not liking is that if the Republicans run the House, Senate, and the presidency, how come they can't make the decisions? And everything's been put on the Democrats. And truth of the matter is, the SNAP budget was cut a long time ago, and here's the, what's gonna happen to all the people who are on SNAP, they're gonna make you get a job, you're gonna work for twenty hours just to get your money, but nobody wants to say that and tell the truth, they want everybody to believe that the Democrats are at fault and holding up our money and our country, and it's not true, there's a dictator running our country, and I don't care what party you voted for or not, but if you think everything is great right about now, then I'm gonna pray for you too. Now, I'm gonna move off of that and jump onto something else real quick, because we had another homicide of some blackmail since I've been up here last, just this past weekend. Where's your chief at? Now, I'm gonna stay here and listen to all the speakers, and I'm gonna see who all brings it up or mentions something, and if your chief is gonna stand up here, because we gotta stop playing with that violence. stand up here. Because we gotta stop playing with that violence. We playing too much. The media is a part of the coup. Now, there's a few things I wanted to say, but I'm really just disappointed in how things are being handled. But for all the ones who are doing good and helping in our community, I'm gonna say thank you. Sean, keep up the good work. I really don't know what else I want to say, but I'm gonna use my last minutes to think about it. And I want everybody else to think about who's really at fault on which direction we're going. The truth needs to be told. There's some demonic spirits in our country right now. And we need to pray. And if you're not praying, not a believer, then okay, I get it. That's on you. But right now, we need to pray. And to the families that just lost another one, I say a prayer for them as well. We all got to come together. And the last thing I want to say is November 25th through to December 2nd is a national blackout. And we need everybody who don't believe in what's happening to not spend any money or do anything on those dates. Thank you.
Caleb McGuire.
Good evening. I'm back. I took October off because it's my birthday month and I needed a little bit of chill time for myself. But I have a few things I want to talk about. First thing is the citizen censorship specifically regarding cursing. I'm just a little confused on the rules because it seems like simply we can't curse because there have been a few slip ups from people in the horseshoe. And it doesn't seem like they get a 30-day ban. So I'm just confused. Is it fighting words? Is it cursing? Is it intentional cursing? Is it any cursing? Because at this point, it just sounds like you guys don't want us to express ourselves how we feel like it. I totally get if somebody's calling you names or something like that. But I just want to briefly address that. And there seems to be a lack of respect for the citizens that come up here when they speak. People leaving when we have to speak is very disrespectful, in my opinion. Watching different aldermen, I heard that the mayor left. I heard Corporation Council left on one of the past meetings. That is some of, that is so disrespectful. We come up here to speak to you guys. We take time out of our day. I know it's just a Tuesday night, but still, I know you guys are kind enough to give us your time and we listen when you speak. It's just crazy that you guys don't listen when we speak. And I'm not talking about all of you. The people that I want to hear this, I feel like aren't here at the moment. And I feel like somebody else ended the call. Because I did catch that we lost somebody. So, hope you're listening on the live stream. Um, real quick, I stopped showing up last month also because I felt like my voice didn't matter. Coming up here and talking to people and seeing only the same people show any kind of care that anyone is up here. And I was convinced that I was done caring about Springfield. I was done coming up and speaking. But after a very kind friend of mine gave me a reminder in a pep talk that my voice does matter, even if some of you guys don't think so. And I want to tell the people listening right now that your voice matters as well. And don't be afraid to come up here and talk to these people because they're not going to respond most of the time. I feel like that's just, they just don't because that's how it goes. But it's intimidating, but your voice matters and they need to hear it, even if you think it doesn't matter. And it would also be great, and I'm not asking you guys to be like, oh, that's amazing every time. Because I know you guys have to be respectful and neutral. But the immediate cutting people off the second that people have to go, okay, they only get three times a figure and then we're gonna skip them? Okay, so Caleb McGuire next, Tiro Staley next. It's just stuff like that. It just seems like you guys are just waiting for us to get out of here. And I don't know how we're supposed to have respect for you guys if it's very obvious that you guys, not all of you, that some of you guys don't have any respect for us. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Aaron Cahill.
Okay, you guys know me. I'm very data driven. So we're gonna talk about real data today. In the United States, non-Hispanic white Americans make up approximately 58% of the population. Black Americans account for around 14%, Hispanics about 20, and Asians around 7%. These numbers matter because when we examine violence, we must examine the proportion and not just the totals. Nationally, firearm homicide rates for black males in the U.S. soar into 50-plus per 100,000 range in some recent years, while for white males, the comparable figure is in the low single digits. This means a young black male might face 10 to 15 times the homicide risk of a young white male purely on the basis of population and rate. In Illinois and here in Springfield specifically, this is a localized and urgent issue that I feel like needs to have more conversation. While Springfield is not the crime capital of America, the data tells us that the city is failing in public safety. In 2023, the Springfield Police Department reported Group A offenses increasing about 7% over the prior year. And by June 2024, the city recorded three murders in one month when in the prior year there were zero. Springfield's violent crime rate in 2024 is about 515.8 per 100,000, which is roughly 2.3 times the U.S. average. So why do we see these patterns, especially in concentrated black and brown communities? And why is the cliched phrase "black-on-black crime" not only unhelpful, but actively harmful? It's true that most homicides in America are intra-racial, and the offenders and victims share the same race. But this pattern holds for all races. White offenders killing white victims is the norm in the white community. The perceived uniqueness of black communities participating in black-on-black crime is an illusion. The real problem isn't race alone. It is poverty, segregation, illegal gun markets, social exclusion, and decades of disinvestment and the failure of policy. So when we say "black-on-black crime," what we're doing is shifting the focus away from structural failure and towards blaming individuals and communities who have had their hands tied for generations. The narrative ignores how decades of redlining, under-resourced schools, concentrated disadvantages, limited job opportunities, toxic policing, and prison cycles, and saturated illegal handgun flows produce lethal environments. Studies show that media and music are not the reason either, so we can't keep using that as the root drivers. There is white-on-white crime. And of course, we don't pay as much attention to it because the rates are lower, because the visibility and context differ. We don't mention it because it seems less concentrated because of the population percentage. But the truth is, intra-racial violence is not the issue. It's differential rates and concentrated risks. So here, we have city officials that are constantly neglecting to invest, failed to intervene, failed to disrupt, failed to partner at scale in public health violence interruptions. We are standing in a failing city system with homelessness, joblessness, untreated trauma, illegal firearms, police departments stretched and are reactive instead of proactive. These are all linked. These consistently escalate and they will always lead to death. We have examples of cities that have embraced focused deterrence, cities that treated violence as public health concerns. We have, they have reversed the retaliatory cycles, cities that have mapped out hotspots, they have improved lighting and paired enforcement with social services to reduce shooting. So what can we do? We can disrupt the supply of illegal handguns. We can implement violence interruptions and public health outreach. We can invest in places like the East Side that has constantly been disinvested in. And we need to hold city officials accountable. This is no longer a blame game. If we really want to talk about the main issue, we can't just look at the surface level because things will never get fixed and the issues will never be addressed. Regardless if it's concentrated in one area, why? And then ask why again. And then ask why again. Because it's not just one answer. You have a heavy job. Please do the work because people are dying. Thank you.
Brianna Day. Brianna Day. Ken Pasha.
I'm gonna take a moment to enjoy that Sean Grayson will at least be in prison for the foreseeable future, which while I did not get the actual result I want, take it. Also gonna take a moment of joy. Dick Cheney died today. He was an evil man. One of the really important things you got to remember in this world is violence doesn't just come at the end of a fist. I think that's something that a lot of people don't really understand, that violence isn't just getting shot. Violence happens every day out on the East Side. And it's not people getting beaten to death. It happens on the North Side. And it's not people getting hit by cars or shot by police. Violence happens every day when we allow the kind of systems that we know exist. I mean, let's talk about that police commission board that was established back in 2005. Go Google that thing. It has been a boondoggle for every administration and a failure up and down, left and right, for every mayor because it's a toothless, pointless board. The very people on it right now want to leave it because it doesn't do anything. The cases that they receive have no outcome and all they get are recommendations. You guys like my recommendations? Do you actually want to do anything because I recommended it to you? You're gonna change policy out of a recommendation? I doubt it. Because that's the thing. Police commission review boards that are civilian-staffed need to be independent, well-funded, and have nothing to do with just sitting there and talking about what I'd like you to do. You need to give them real power, else you're just wasting everyone's time. It's 2005. I mean, 2013, 2017, 2020, 2023, there's stories about, oh, there's this frustration. It feels like it doesn't go anywhere. Nobody listens. I mean, do you just interested in hearing that story get printed in 2025? And that isn't like meant to be an attack on you. It's not your fault that it's been ineffective for years, but it is your opportunity to change that. I mean, heck, I applied to it months ago under the recommendation of one of the current members. I've never heard anything about it since then. I think I'd be a decent member of it. You don't have to agree with the way I go about things, but you have to at least understand that I take a really severe view on things like that and would really put my heart into it at the very least. More so than just sitting there, like most of the people have to do right now on an ineffective commission. So if we're gonna bring it back, let's actually make it worth doing. There are other examples, even within Illinois, like the Evanston Review Commission, which they actually gave them some level of investigative authority and the ability to institute their findings. Wild, right? It's almost like they want them to get something done. And I think that's kind of the thing we're at. Recommendations and calls to action, unless you guys are actually gonna take that stuff seriously and look back at the long wreckage of all these failed groups and administrations that have come before us, I really caution you to think about that stuff. Like Grayson going to jail, as I said last week, is not the end of that. The Massey Commission has given you guys a blueprint. And it says countywide on a lot of that. But let's be serious. Who's the biggest city in the county? Who's the largest of their property tax? Am I missing something? It's us. Do we have a direct conduit with them? Could you pick up and talk to Van Meter about real serious stuff like the thousands of dollars we invest in mowing their lawns? No. They absolutely ignore us. They hold their meetings opposite us to avoid the ability for you guys to even step over there and have something to say. It's just, I think that's something where I really caution you guys to think about those recommendations that the Massey Commission has given you and apply that into something like the police civilian commission. I mean, those are the kind of things that languish for years because people think that it's effective because we did it. It took several years to even get that established. And now here we are, well over 20 years later, still talking about how it's not doing anything. And that's what we see a lot of times in Springfield. A lot of this stuff takes so long because people aren't willing to actually do something about it. They want to upset anybody. They want to make anybody uncomfortable. But change does not come from being comfortable, guys. It really doesn't. If everybody's happy with it, there should be a problem. Someone should be asking, why? Why is everybody just so copacetic about it? Because that's ineffective leadership. And that's not blaming the mayor. Every single one of you is a leader in your own way, for your ward, for the council. It's up to you to do something about that other than just pass it off to the next administration. Because I think that's frustrating is this idea that somebody will fix it. Like when you got mad about those chargers getting put in and they just told you to wait on it because your infrastructure wasn't good enough. How much longer should we wait? How much longer should a city that has a 43% poverty rate for the black population and an 18% poverty rate for this city, which by the way, has 36,000 SNAP recipients? How many people live in this city? How many people live in this county? Do the math. Think about that. Where's all that money gonna go? Where's it gonna come from? Hungry people don't stay hungry for long, right, guys? Talk about crime rates. I mean, really think about that. I mean, it's not, I'll tell you right now, and give me two seconds and I promise I'm done. This month for me, it started November 1st when they cut off those benefits. That started, I didn't see anything November. When I go to my stores and I see somebody taking a loaf of bread, I didn't see anything. When I see somebody walking out with a winter coat from a store, guess what? I didn't see anything. Because those people need it. And if you don't think it's gonna get worse, if we don't do something, wait and see.
Thank you, sir.
Roy Walton.
Say it one more time.
Roy Walton. That's it, Mayor.
All right. Motion?
Motion do adjourn.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. Will you ask Alderman Conley?
Alderman Conley, how do you vote?
Too late.
Is she there?
She voted aye.
She's still there.
Good night.
Thank you.